All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this session, the Bridgewater Town Council meeting, to order. Can we please rise for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this meeting is being aired live and recorded. Let's see, I do have some condolences to extend this evening from our Veterans Officer. I want to make aware of the passing of Charles E. Murphy. Howard Street in Bridgewater passed away on May 5th, 2024. Mr. Murphy served in the U.S. Army from 1952 to 1955 and was a veteran of the Korean War. He was 89 years old. Can we please have a moment of silence for him and all deceased veterans, family members, Thank you. All right, to get going with the agenda, we have approval of the minutes from the last meeting of May 21st, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
Question?
Yes.
There were two counselors listed, former counselors listed on...
Okay, so for that particular meeting then, obviously if that was regarding, meaning that new counselors were not in attendance to that, then they would not be able to make a motion on this. It would be any prior existing counselor.
So I want to move that, so that May 21st meeting should have the new counselors listed. Have Dennis Gallagher listed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
If you can amend that?
Certainly, yes, I understand what you're saying.
So I'll make a motion to amend?
Yep, certainly. Can we make those? Yep, motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of those amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, I believe Debbie, you have that noted there.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve. Okay, we have a motion approved. I have a second. Thank you. Counselor Strickles, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, announcements for the President. The only one I'd like to make a motion of, just to remind fellow counselors, we have our council training coming up on Tuesday, June 25th, at BSU from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. So just keep an eye on your calendars for that. And if you have not confirmed your attendance with Debbie, please do so before you leave here tonight. Do you not have any proclamations this evening? So we will move right to Citizens Open Forum. Does any citizens like to come on up? And please state your name and address for the record. And please, again, remember, we have three minutes. And due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law Requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Please go ahead, sir.
All right, good evening. Ed Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane. As you know, I've spoken several times in recent meetings about charter compliance, which was prompted by the State of the Town Address by a town manager. I was also, I also mentioned at your last meeting of other requirements in the charter that I believe are currently not being met. I'd like to give you several examples, just so you're aware. Article 2, Section 2-3-C6. "The council president shall call no less than two meetings of the general public each fiscal year for the purpose of obtaining public input to the policies of the town." I'm not aware that that is happening. Second one, Article 2, Section 2-6-C1.2. "The town council shall be responsible for ensuring that the charter, the laws, the ordinances, and other plans, policies, and orders for the government of the town are properly implemented and enforced." So as you can see, per the last charter article that I read, it is your responsibility to ensure charter compliance, not the town manager's. In addition, as I mentioned at our prior meeting, there is a pending charter recommendation that addresses compliance in more detail. There are also other options used by cities and towns throughout our state that put more focus on ensuring proper charter compliance. One of these in particular that I mentioned before is the formation of a charter compliance committee that would exist under the council. Mr. President, I respectfully ask that you bring this issue to the forefront and work with the rest of this body to provide an adequate compliance strategy that serves our town in the most efficient means possible. I'd like to bring up another compliance-related item, only this time have to do with zoning. As most of you probably know, it's against our zoning, town zoning ordinance to run a retail or consumer service business from within an identified residential zone. Without getting specific, it is apparent today that there are in fact violations to this ordinance, meaning businesses being run within residential zones. In the past, action had been taken by the town that required several businesses to actually relocate to proper business-owned areas. However, from my understanding, since 2010, the level of enforcement has dwindled significantly. Not sure why this is, but in the past, this was the responsibility of the building inspector or the zoning enforcement officer within our town. If we don't ensure that ordinances and/or laws passed by this body are enforced, then what good are they in the first place? The citizens of Bridgewater expect that all legislation passed by this body is being carried out by town employees. Mr. President, I ask that this topic be added to a future meeting with an update to be provided by our town manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivaldi. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Mrs. Hanson.
Good evening, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I just want to say how it was, how much it was nice to see the Memorial Day Parade come back. I just want to bring that, you know, some little bit of good news on that. It was nice to see the participation and attendance, though, and even at the cemeteries, there were more people at these cemeteries than there have been in the past. Not a lot, but it's definitely improved. The only comments I would have is hopefully next year, there's more attendance, but more participants in the marching of the parade. I know it's a solemn occasion, just more veterans or whatever somehow in the parade. That would be nice to see. And the other comment I had was I and others were wondering why the B.R. marching band wasn't in there like they have other years. And I would appreciate if somebody could look into that, only because of the rumors. And I did talk to a veteran during the poppy giving out at Roach Brothers one day, and they said that, and I don't know if it's true, because I'm hearing it from them, but they wanted money in order to march. I and others that I've talked to find that disheartening, because they are being paid by, they're supported by the town. We pay for them, you know, the schooling. And I don't understand why they would have to be paid to march in a town ceremony such as Memorial Day Parade and a Veterans Day. And they have always done it in the past. So if that's true, I would like somebody to look into that. But it would be nice if we had the students participating. And I think it would help encourage more, you know, attendance and participation. So that's the only concern I had, and I would appreciate if somebody could look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Sorry about that. All right. Anyone else like to come up for Citizens Open Forum? Go in once, go in twice. All right, we're moving forward. Next up, we have some appointments this evening. Let's bring that up. So first, lists of appointments are for Veterans Council. I'll turn that over to Mr. Dutton to go over, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, actually, first, this is an advisory committee. If you want to take that up, it's Paul Laporte requesting to be appointed for a three-year term, beginning 2024 and ending in 2027.
Could I ask a question?
Certainly. Go ahead.
Counselor Lindy.
Just trying to be clear about appointments, and I'm not going to object to this or anything, but I was told at one point, when I was asking to be appointed to things, that you could only be on one committee. Is that still the case or not the case?
You could, no, you can still be, you can be, I prefer to hire, well, wouldn't that be nice? I prefer to appoint volunteers to one committee to not overload them, but there's no prohibition, outright prohibition on two committees. I think if you're a counselor, that's a different story, but I don't...
It was prior to me being a counselor. There was a committee I wanted to be on, and I wasn't allowed to do.
I can't recall that.
Yeah.
I don't know why that would have been, but...
Okay. Because I have no objection to this individual. I just wanted to make sure that I was on the right page. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so do I hear a motion for approval of Paul Laporte for this committee?
Motion approved.
Mr. Chase, and seconded by Ms. Allenberg. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your volunteers, and Mr. Laporte. All right, so now we'll move on to Veterans Council, and we have three nominees for that. Mr. Dutton.
We have three nominees. First is Frederick Timmerman, again, for a term of 2024 to 2027.
We're going to take these individually or as a group, Mr. Dutton?
If you choose to take them as a group, that's absolutely fine. They're all under one agenda item, but I will also say, Mr. Laporte also, to Counselor Lindy's point, also has put forward his name for the Veterans Council, and I would encourage that ratification. His term would be 2024 to 2026. And then Mary Bogel, 2024 to 2027. And you might notice, different years, they're not all appointed for the three years. That's just because somebody might be filling an empty seat, and we want to make sure that those seats are staggered, so that you don't have a whole bunch coming up for appointment at one time, so.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve all three names, yes.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, then.
Mr. Chase was second. Any discussion on the names? Seeing none, all those in favor of appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you for those volunteers. All right, next up, we have one appointment for the Cultural Council. Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's Joyce Pitta, again, for a term of 2024 to 2027, and I would encourage ratification of that.
Thank you. Do we hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chase, seconded by Ms. Allenberg. Any discussion on the appointment?
Actually, it was me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Robinson.
Sure.
Any, I just heard a voice. Any discussion on the, on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you to Mrs. Pitta. And the last one is the DEIB Committee. Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Stephanie Simeon for a term of 2024 to 2025, and I would certainly encourage that appointment.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Allenberg.
Is this a paid position or a volunteer position?
All of these are only volunteer positions.
Okay, okay. I would like to make a motion that we strike this appointment, because I think that DEI has already proved itself to be not helpful to society. So that's what my motion is. If anyone would care to, second it.
Well, the initial motion is for the reference, Mr. Rollins, how should we handle this?
You would just vote against it. You'd vote against the appointment.
Okay.
I'd like to motion to approve.
All right, we have Ms. Robinson, a vote, and a second by Ms. Strickles. Any further discussion on the appointment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion carries still.
For a point of order, just relative to Counselor Lindy's earlier inquiry, I took a look at the code, and what you're referencing actually has to do with elected positions.
Okay.
And what the code essentially says is, any registered voter of the town shall be eligible to run and hold any elective town office, provided that no person shall simultaneously hold more than one elective office. So those were elected positions.
Okay.
I don't recall the fact pattern, but...
Okay.
Just so you know.
Thank you.
That's what the code says.
Thanks for the clarification. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Rollins, for the clarification. All right, moving forward. We do not have any hearings this evening. We do not have any license transactions this evening. We do not have any presentations this evening, which brings us to the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Dutton?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I've got a few items on my report this evening. I just wanted to respond to some of the public comment, at least the parts that I'm able to respond to. I think there was a public comment last meeting about charter review ordinances. Excuse me. And we did, let me just bring it up. We do, the council has entertained 11 recommended changes, and I believe five of those have been adopted by rules and procedures and forwarded back to the council for approval by the council. And I believe the council's done with the ones that have been identified. There were several that were not recommended by rules and procedures, and so six, I would assume, if five were moved on, six were not approved. So that is, that is what I have for charter review. Obviously, it's the council's purview, and the council's decision whether or not you want to take up any additional recommendations, that's up to the council. There was a reference to Zoom meetings and some frustration with Zoom meetings, which I completely understand. Under temporary state law, we've been using Zoom for town committee meetings for about four years without major issue. I realize, very, very clearly realize, it's a change, and obviously, we all went through significant change in 2020 and forward. The state legislature has extended our ability to use virtual meetings until March of 2025. And while I'm certainly not going to guess what the legislature will do after that, I think it's widely assumed that virtual meetings are here to stay in some form or another. And as I, as I say, for better or worse, they're now the overwhelming choice for both, certainly the public sector and the private sector. So some of the decisions that go into the choice of remote or virtual meetings or in-person meetings, after the pandemic struck, I appointed, and the council's ratified a number of volunteers to sit on various committees. Many of those volunteers can only do it if the remote, excuse me, the remote option exists. And we certainly have tried to accommodate the widest range of volunteers, and, you know, certainly among other things, those that have childcare issues, those that have mobility issues. We want to make sure we give all of those folks the ability to participate in their town government. And Zoom is, Zoom or Teams, but Zoom is what we use, is giving those volunteers certainly a chance to participate that they might not otherwise have had. We have, there are committees who have expressed a preference to meet in person, and we've given committees that opportunity as a committee to decide whether to return to in-person meetings or continue virtual. There are some rules around both, obviously, but coming back in person, our requirements are that the meeting has to be recorded. That's, that's a requirement, I believe in the admin code. Making sure, we want to make sure that one, at least one member of the committee or board is trained in how to use the technology that's available in this room and available in 201A. We also want to make sure that a quorum is present if we're going to have, back, you know, go back, if a committee's going to go back to in-person commit, meetings, rather. And I think I've mentioned before, we're not entertaining hybrid meetings until the technology improves and we can afford the additional staffing and the technology, but also the additional staffing to properly support the hybrid platform. So, so I know, as I said, I completely understand the frustration, especially if, you know, your experience with municipal government over the decades has been all in person. But we are trying to, trying to accommodate a different, kind of a whole different world in sort of balancing the interests of the volunteers and certainly attendees and the folks that have to go through a hearing process or go through a, go through a municipal process in order to do whatever they wish to do. So, so that's what I have on, on Zoom meetings, but happy to answer questions about that.
All right, any counselor questions on that for Mr. Dutton?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Allenberg?
Yes, thank you. You say that we would require additional staffing. Would it be possible to have citizen volunteers go through BTV and become technically aware, okay, and thus be able to provide that coverage for the in-person meetings, which I think would be very helpful for the constituents?
Absolutely. In fact, I think BTV, I've talked to Jeff Fowler quite a bit about the technology, but they, they have put the call out for volunteers often. And I, if there are interested citizens that would be interested in doing that, absolutely.
That sounds wonderful. I'm sure some citizens will volunteer. That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Any other counselors have any questions on that particular topic? Okay, all right, and public comments and meetings, Mr. Dutton?
Yep, we had a comment about public comment, and I addressed some of this in February, but I just want to reemphasize and sort of what I said back then. We are, and I think it's no secret, we're trying to tighten up the, the work of the volunteer boards and committees, make it rewarding, and we want to make sure that the decisions that the boards make can withstand a legal challenge. We've never had, with a couple of exceptions, we've never had a significant legal challenge to the, the decisions that the boards have made. I think as, as the town gets more popular and as, as, you know, the projects that come through, the various, especially the various land use committees become more complex, I think we certainly always open the door to, to a more litigious environment. But that said, we want to make sure that the meetings follow the Volunteer Handbook, as well as the Roberts Rules, which we have, have adopted, or the Modified Roberts Rules for meeting protocols. Public comment, to the extent that there is a public comment period, is open for anyone wishing to make a comment. Public comment periods are not required by Roberts Rules, but we encourage, I encourage committees to, to put one on their agendas. Some of the committees, especially ones with, with very heavy public hearing agendas, often have opted not to have public comment, so that they can properly funnel those, those, the comments as part of that public hearing process. So if there is a public hearing on an agenda, that is specifically for the public comment related to that particular agenda item or project. Commenting on a project during a separate public comment period on the agenda really is not effective nor appropriate. So I, I think I gave an example, you know, about what's a public record for a hearing. If you have a public hearing, all of the comments and all of the, the voices expressed during the public hearing are part of a public record. If we ask the town attorney to go in and defend us because somebody brought up some other issue that might have been pertinent to the particular project as part of a public comment, that's not part of the public record. So we, as I say, we're trying to tighten up so that we can prevent some of the, you know, some of the potential suits that would come our way otherwise. So if, and I think I mentioned this back in February, too, if the hearing is closed, using a public period comment, using the public period comment time to voice an opinion on a project that's under deliberation is also inappropriate. And a town attorney would say that that's potentially grounds for, for a legal challenge. So, so really, in terms of a municipal setting, public hearings are really important. And we want to make sure that anybody that has anything to say about a project or, or something before a hearing, before a board, we want to make sure that their voice is heard. We want to make sure that, that the public hearing process is used in the right way to allow them to voice their opinion. So that, that is, that is why that's really important, because the public record needs to include what citizens say about a project. So, so I just, I want to be very clear about that. So anyway, that's sort of what I have to say on the public comment, but happy to answer questions about that.
All right, go ahead.
My question is, does our administrative code address that properly, so the public understands? Because I've gotten complaints from people about Conservation Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, that people don't feel like they can be heard, especially the folks like over with the NIP.
Yeah.
And they're very concerned about that. And it, if, if it's hard for me to understand, it's probably even harder for other people to understand. Not that I'm any, any more talented and gifted, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to clarify it someplace, so people can see it in writing and, you know, like a frequently asked question or something like that.
It is, I mean, I realize not everybody's clamoring to read the Volunteer Handbook before they go to public hearings, but it is in the public, in the Volunteer Handbook. There are, as we know, there are a couple of provisions in the admin code that we do need to change because of open meeting compliance, so that's, that's hopefully coming to you at your next meeting, whenever. But that's...
Okay.
...slightly different than, than public comment. But I do think your point is a good one, and maybe I'll just take what I just said and try to make it a lot more simple, so people can understand it, and we'll just maybe do a one-pager about why, why speaking at a public hearing is important and why that's where you want to speak, to make sure your voice is heard. That's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton.
Chairman?
I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Allenberg.
Yes, yes. May I proceed with a few questions?
Well, technically, this is part of the discussion, we shouldn't be having discussion. I know we allowed a couple of questions, but it is a brief question.
Well, yes. These committees are advisory versus ministerial. Mr. Dutton knows the difference about that. Let me just make a comment. Advisory means the citizens come on the council, they render an opinion, which may or may not be taken. I would submit to you that the constituents are discouraged by advisory-level committees. The citizens who volunteer are deeply involved. Those constituents should be given ministerial status, which will do things like work on the budget for the town, okay? Such things as recreation department, yes, I know, beyond the scope. Anyway, so I think that is something I would like to be addressed at the next meeting, please, Mr. Town Manager.
I think that's actually a good, you bring up a good point, and I think that's probably something that we'll have a lot of discussion about during council training, but I can certainly come back to that after the council training.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Manager. I would like to have a full discussion, actually, on that, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. Moving on to Fire Station update, please.
Fire Station, although you wouldn't, can't see it, it is moving very well, on track. The first phase of the Army Corps permit has been issued. The second phase should be here next week. The contract has been signed, and the contractor is set to begin clearing likely before the second phase of the Army Corps permit arrives, which is allowable and permissible. So that's, that's what I have on the Fire Station. Will be full steam ahead, hopefully, next week.
Any questions for the town manager on the Fire Station?
Groundbreaking?
We'll do a groundbreaking probably after the clearing, so that there's a place for folks to actually be. We have talked about that. I just don't remember precisely where in the stage it's going to be, but yep, we're going to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Dutton, when exactly, did you say the clearing was going to start, approximately?
It can start next week. Still kind of dependent upon the contractor and the contractor's schedule, so.
Okay, thank you.
So once, once you sign, just so the, the council gets a bit of a building project sort of 101, once the contract is signed, what, in, in your mind, essentially what you've done is you've given that project and you've given that property to the contractor, it's under the contractor's control. If you remember when the Mitchell School was built, the contractor was very particular about not having, you know, people going through for tours and things during construction. during construction. And there's a reason for that. It's because they carry all the liability. Their insurance carries all the liability for anything that happens on that site, almost anything that happens on that site. So you'll see contractors being very, very possessive of the land and the project until it gets to the end and gets turned back over to the town. So just
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. All right, anything else? Any other councils have questions? Next thing up, Parthenon Freeze Restoration Update.
The good news is the freezes have been restored to original condition. I've seen pictures. They look fabulous. They are currently being stored in the contractor's storage facility. We pay, I think, something like 200 bucks a month to do that, and there is a reason that we want to store them there and not locally, because every space that we have is workspace, essentially, and we don't want them to suffer any additional accidents. The whole reason they were restored is because they were pushed around while they were being stored over at the Old Town Hall. So we just simply don't have a suitable place where that they would be out of the way of the daily work. In order to hang them, we have to do some significant structural work in the, not sure what you call that area, the front, by the front entry. And so when that project, when that project, that structural improvement project gets underway, we won't be able to use the front doors, and it'll be very hard to access the clerk's office and the collector treasures office. So we're kind of waiting until summer so that we have a quieter, quieter foot traffic in the building to get that work done. So it is scheduled, so by fall, we should see those beautiful freezes up and displayed the way they should be, but it's a work in progress. So happy to answer questions on that one.
Any questions for the town council on that topic?
I do have a question.
Ms. Ellenberg?
I've never seen these. How big are they?
Each one, I believe there are four of them, and each one is about three and a half feet by about two and a half feet, roughly.
I see. And do they go in a line across the wall or up and down, or what?
They will go on the, there's a term for that, I don't know what it, but above, when you walk in the front door of the building, above you, you look up and you see the second floor, but there's a wall space there. So they'll nicely fit right around that wall space.
I see, I see. Okay.
They'll be nice.
All set. Thank you very much. And finally, Old Scotland Links paving update.
Old Scotland Links paving is almost complete. The contractors did that very quickly, which is good, and I think the concern was that that might cause some impact to the golf, golfing community. I don't believe it did. I think Barrettson and Troon worked together to coordinate that. And I haven't, I'll put it this way, I've heard no complaints, and I've heard only good things about that project. So a lot of good things. So that's what I have on that one, but certainly happy to answer questions.
Okay. Any questions for the town manager on that topic, or for the next meeting, if anyone has any questions? Yes, go ahead. Ms. Lindy?
For the next meeting, through you to the town manager, could we get an update on the Broad Street project, that there is now a signed purchase and sales? And I'm just wondering, again, I know I've brought this up before, is there any way to get that property cleaned up? It is just, it just, I walk it every day, and it's just, makes me crazy. And I get that from everybody I talk to. So if you could get an update on that.
Okay. Any other councils? Ms. Robinson?
If I could, I'd like to request probably a follow-up from the public comments around alleged violations of businesses being run in residential areas. So appreciate an update around the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Anyone else?
Um, sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Ellenberg?
I know Mr. Lindy had raised the idea of a room where we could meet constituents. And so I'm just raising his thing, like, what is the progress on that, if you could update us?
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Counselor Paul?
I was just going to request that we have an update for the veterans districting?
What was that again, though?
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm not saying it again. It's an update. Thank you.
Update. Oh, you said redistricting?
District.
On the district, okay.
Formation.
We don't want to talk about redistricting.
No, not either. All right. Any other council? Yes, Council McGrath?
Mr. Dutton, why doesn't the town of Bridgewater have a recreation center? And my other question is, why was the summer program canceled? Was there any input from the park and recreation committee or from the parents who have used this program for their children before making decision? If not, why not? Thank you.
So update on the rec center and summer program. Okay. Any other councils have any requests?
And may I just ask, to build upon Ms. McGrath's question, who made the decision to change things?
He'll summarize that. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much. I don't have anything directly, so we'll get those next meeting. Moving on, discussions, we do not have any discussions this evening. Committee reports, I don't think too many committees have met quite yet.
I just wanted to say that we canceled tonight's budget and finance committee because the finance committee didn't have quorum on Monday, so I am moving that to the 6 o'clock timeframe before the next council meeting, because that would allow for recommendations from budget and finance.
Not a problem. Thank you. Any other comments from any other committees? Okay. Moving on, legislation for action. Unfortunately, I believe all of our legislation for action this evening is not able to be addressed because of that exact situation. So we will bump all of that to our next meeting. Next is old business. We do not have any this evening. Following that up, we have some new business. Let's see. First one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we have ordinance, this one and the administrative code, explained to us, please?
Yeah, this is the first one I'm bringing up. I just was getting to the right
I know. I neglected to look it up, so I would like to hear what it is.
So Ordinance D F Y 24-007, proposed amendment to ordinance, Part II, Administrative Code, Chapter 1, Article 2, Section 1. This was brought forth by Council Fred Chase. So either Council Chase or Mr. Dutton, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. I'll be happy to, for my part. With respect to our administrative code, this proposed amendment would impact three of our town boards and committees, specifically the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, because those three bodies are rather unique in the respect that they conduct adjudicatory hearings. That is to say that the hearings that they conduct result in discussion and consideration of, and the issuance of permits, for example, with respect to the Planning Board, orders of condition from the Conservation Commission, and variances, perhaps, from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So these are all, you might say, quasi-judicial processes.
So what is the, what is the change that's being proposed?
Well, I'm actually getting to address that right now.
Good.
I think that people needed to understand who it affects and
Okay.
kind of why it's being proposed. So currently, when a member of one of those particular bodies is absent from a session at which a hearing is in process, being conducted on behalf of a, an applicant, which would be a petitioner, someone from the town, going before the board to get a permit or a variance, or whatever the case might be, because of a member's absence, they cannot, at a future meeting, on that same hearing, they cannot participate. They would need to recuse themselves because they were absent for a good part of the consideration that preceded it.
That's what our administrative code says now?
Ms. Ellenberg, let him finish his statement. It's not a discussion.
Sorry.
So what is proposed, as you can see under that, in the center of the order, paragraph F, that language in paragraph F is taken directly from the statute, which is Mass. General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23D. So what it's intended to do is to permit a member of one such board or body who has missed a meeting to acquaint themselves with the proceedings that they missed, either through watching the video, reading the minutes, discussion with other members, things of that sort, and to attest in a written certificate, a signed written certificate, that they have acquainted themselves with the particulars that they were not there to observe and participate in directly.
Okay.
And upon that, they would be permitted to continue their full participation and voting with respect to the matter before the board.
I approve of the participation part.
Again, Ms. Ellenberg, it's not a discussion back and forth. Let him just
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I, may I ask a question?
Well, again, we're in the process of, we'll have a moment for a question, just a moment. Let him finish making a statement, so we can bring it up for a motion, and then we can have some discussion. Just some procedure here. Anything further, Mr. Chase, on description of that? Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay. So that being said, we're looking to refer this to rules and procedures. Do I have a motion to refer to rules and procedures on this? Mrs. Strickland, a primary and a second.
Excuse me, point of order. I had a question.
I understand. I'm about to say a second for discussion.
Ms. Ellenberg, he was absolutely right. The way the process works is there's a motion first, then there's a second.
Okay, and then we enter discussion.
Can I finish? Then there's a second. After the second, there's an opportunity for discussion. No one was trying to silence you. I believe we are just trying to follow the proper order.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
I think my constituents like when we cut to the point, but all right, whatever.
There is procedure to go through.
I will try to obey.
Thank you. So we do have our motion and a second. And any discussion, Mrs. Ellenberg?
Yes. Now, we have the ministerial and the, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wrong topic. You mentioned a certificate that people would have to attest that they would have updated themselves before they would be allowed to vote.
That's correct.
It is my opinion that that is very awkward, not likely to happen, and will not increase participation if a certificate is required. That is simply my opinion.
This is actually in force and has been for quite a number of years in many Massachusetts towns. In fact, it existed here in Bridgewater during our previous form of government, the town meeting form of government.
Mm-hmm.
In 2010, when we adopted the council form of government, the bylaws at the time of the town and regulations were superseded by our current charter, which did not carry forward this particular provision. So that's why it's being reintroduced now. But it is very much in keeping with what happens in a great many Massachusetts towns. And by the way, all of those towns do have a form, typically a one-page form, that provides for exactly what we've said, and it's what would be presented to a member of one such board who did, in fact, complete their review of the material they missed, and they would, they would sign that form, present it to the board, and they then would be permitted to, it becomes part of the public record, they would be permitted to vote
Hold on a minute.
on the matter before the board.
Point of information on that, just so there's no misconception, that whoever drafted this legislation was trying to add that requirement, and that's required by state law. So if, this is what's called the Mullen Rule, and it's Mass. General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23D, I was actually going to make a recommendation, if you were to push it forward any further, that the end of the ordinance should actually cite to the statute, because adoption of the statute itself is part of the kind of protocol for adopting the Mullen Rule. But the Mullen Rule requires the signed certification. So in order to adopt this rule, you have to have that requirement.
But we are not required to adopt the rule, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So any other further discussions? Ms. Robinson?
As I think about our recent legislation around the form-based code, as we've talked around making sure that the Planning Board has the ability for expedited approvals, which would probably include a level of public hearing as well, how does this play into the, does this have any relevancy to this? So for instance, if there's a public hearing and then there's a vote of a recommendation by the Planning Board, but there is a member absent, this just helps to indicate later that this person had a vote
What it really does is it helps to assure quorum.
It achieved a quorum.
Because the situation could arise. Remember, some of these hearings before conservation or planning aren't one or even two meeting-long sessions. They may go on for a great number of meetings, and that just increases the likelihood that someone, or more than one person, is going to be absent and be subject to this particular problem. So it does help assure to provide a quorum of members who are well acquainted with all of the proceedings.
Okay, so then they would have to notify in advance that they would not be participating in a particular one, but that they plan to vote through this method?
That's right. In the absence of this, they would, effectively, they would need to recuse themselves. With this in place, they would be able to remedy that and participate fully.
Gotcha. Thank you.
May I propose an amendment?
Right now, we're just referring
To the ordinance?
Just referring it to the subcommittee to be reviewed first. After that, when it comes back, the council has a further discussion on
So then are we putting this off, then, from voting tonight, if this goes into a subcommittee?
We're referring this to rules and procedures.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Because
Any further discussion?
And then rules and procedures. Any council can attend rules and procedures
Correct.
if there are comments to add or suggestions.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg.
Okay. May I just make a point of information? I would like them to be able to make a quorum, and we rely on good faith of that volunteer. In other words, we don't do the Mullen Rule with a certificate. That's all I'm saying.
Well Yes, we are. Exactly. So
So then you can't achieve a quorum?
Ms. Ellenberg?
At the present status. Sorry.
So that's fine. Right now, the motion and the second on the floor is to send this to rules and procedures, and let's vet it out through rules and procedures. So with that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So move, move to rules and procedures. Thank you. Next order up, Order O F Y 24-047, laying out and accepting a private way of Timber Lane, also brought forth by Council Chase. Would you like to speak to that, Council Chase, or
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much in particular to say, except that there are several such matters before us tonight, for which the same developer has come before us as petitioner. And I think that in each case, these are certainly suitable instances for us to consider adoption of these as public ways.
Okay. And they are up to be referred to the Planning Board for review. Do I have a motion to send a Planning Board?
So move.
Second by Ms. Liddy, second by Mr. Chase. Any further discussion? Ms. McGrath, yes?
Thank you. So when we become, do sidewalks and streetlights also become the towns if we accept these private ways?
I do believe so. Mr. Dutton?
Most of the time, unless there's some exception, yes.
So is there a restriction on the kind of streetlights that a developer can use on a private way compared to a public way?
That's generally sorted out at the Planning Board level. When the Planning Board approves a subdivision, the developer can come in and ask for a waiver of some of the Planning Board's rules and regulations. And if they want to do a different streetlight, then that's really up to the Planning Board.
Okay. One more question. So now we're going to take over the plowing, standing, and the maintenance of all this. So, I mean, I might be wrong, but am I assuming that the only compensation the town gets is from the taxes from the new developed homes?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor referring to Planning Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is Order O F Y 24- Next is Order OFY 24-048, again, laying out and accepting a private way of Oldfield Road. Again, as mentioned by Mr. Chase, it seems similar to what we've had just previously. So do I have a motion to send this to Planning Board?
So move.
First and second, Mrs. Strickles on the primary, Ms. Robinson on the second. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor sending to Planning Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, Order OFY 24-049, again, laying out and accepting a private way of Urbek Circle Extension. Again, to the same vein, looking to send this to Planning Board. Do I have a motion to send to Planning Board?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Robinson, second by Mr. Chase. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor of sending to Planning Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That looks to wrap up new business for this evening, which brings us to oh, citizens' comments. This one's going by pretty quick. Any citizens like to come up and make a comment before we wrap up this evening? Mr. Vali?
Yes, and I've already boxed with Lane, just a couple of follow-ups. So there were two questions that I had asked several meetings ago, still have not been answered, and I think Counselor Murphy reminded us of those last week, and they both had to do with the State of the Town address. One of the questions was, why didn't we do it in January? And the reason for that was because the charter says that when you do it in January, it helps to find the goals of the council for the year and also for the town manager for the year. So that question has not been answered. And the second question I asked was, what happens when there's a charter violation? And that hasn't been answered. So I asked it once, you reminded everybody, and now I'm asking it again. It's frustrating. And just a clarification on the last item, Counselor Chase, you had mentioned that when we changed our form of government, we used to have the ability to do whatever we could do in that old bylaw, but when we changed the form of government, we lost that function. One of the first things that happened, it wasn't because of the charter, one of the first things that happened when we went to this form of government was that all the bylaws had to be transitioned over into ordinances in the administrative code. And there was a group that did that. I think Counselor Wood was involved in that, maybe cheering that group. So they must have, when they translated it from the old to the new, they must have left that out. It had nothing to do with going to the form of government, it just had to do with them transitioning. So just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vali. Anyone else? Mrs. Hanson?
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I just clarifying on the public comments that Mr. Dutton said. So what you're saying is that in the beginning of a committee meeting like COMCON or Planning Board or whatever, we're not able to, if they say any public comments, we're not able to speak on anything that's going to be on the agenda until that item comes up later in the agenda. Is that correct? So I would just ask, so it's clarified for us when we are listening, they ask for public comment, they shouldn't say, you can't talk about anything, they say public comment, you can't talk anything about the agenda, but they don't say you can talk about it at the time of the, what the item. So just for clarification, because I think they should be required to say, we're looking for public comment, you can't comment on anything that's currently on the agenda until that item comes up later on in the meeting. That way, we know we're going to be heard, because otherwise, we're dumbfounded, because that's the reason why we're on there to begin with. So if you, just take that few extra sentences to clarify to the public that you will be able to speak about the agenda, but not in the beginning. You can talk about anything you want. You can talk about the sun, you can talk about the moon, but the agenda item itself, wait until it comes up. That's all they have to do to clarify so that we understand. I think that would be the easiest and simplest thing seemed to do. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson.
Oh. On the charter, I was on the charter committee meeting a couple of years back, and we worked hard on that. And I, again, I don't see much, and you've only approved, you know, a small portion of it. I'm like, what's happened to the rest of it? And will that be, once you go through it all, are we going to have it put to the voters again like we did a few years back, which it ended up getting denied because of a few items? But we made an awful lot of recommendations, and I don't see that it was, it was kind of like for nothing. So I'm just concerned that a lot of it's just being pushed aside. Does that mean everything is going to stay the same, except for those five to five items that have come up so far? So answers to that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Anybody else like to speak? Come right up.
Gina Gascioni, 35 Wall Avenue. I'd just like to say I did speak to, you probably remember, the last council meeting about the summer recreation program, and posed some questions and suggestions, requests. I'd hope to hear more tonight on it, but I'd like to thank Councillors McGrath and Ellenberg for their concern with it. I had a whole spiel written out on it, but seeing as they asked for the report at the next meeting, you saved from that. But I would like to hear those answers, and plus, I've addressed a number of questions and concerns to Mr. Dutton, too, separately, that I'd like to see included in the report next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Anybody else? Citizens open forum. I mean, citizens' comments.
Council comments now?
We'll come right to that, yes. All right. So the citizens' comments are all set. We will start, we'll go to council comments. I'll start with Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Just a real quick one. Thank you to those who are willing to step up and volunteer. Congratulations on the appointments. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson. Counsel Ellenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions for Mr. Dutton.
Well, again, it's not time to ask questions, it's just to make a statement.
I know. I understand. However, earlier in the agenda, it said no counselor discussion, although some was allowed, so therefore I had held this for this juncture.
Just go ahead and make a statement.
Okay. I wanted to know what is the status of the negotiations between the state and Bridgewater regarding the water and sewer existing status and what is to be developed? Secondly, I would like to know what department in the state are you dealing with? Third, who are you speaking to in the State Department? And I would like those questions answered. Thank you, Mr. Dutton, and thank you to the constituents that asked these questions and prompted me to do these. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to B C C R, again, for their pride-raising event, flag-raising event. It was a great event, great turnout, great day. So thank you to those folks, looking forward to the Juneteenth event upcoming. And then just to tie a bow on everything, I'd just like to say, I think, you know, we could all probably do a better job of following up on some of the questions that are being asked during these comment periods. I don't think it, you know, can solely lie on the town manager, but all of us hear these questions, and we should all do a better job making sure that we're following up and getting those folks some answers. So just wanted to put it back on us a little bit for the responsibility there as well, too, myself included.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel Lindy?
So following up on Counsel Murphy's comments, I just want to say that he did a great job addressing the crowd, and thank you to my colleagues that also attended, that were able to attend. I want to just remind people that the Fourth of July isn't too far away, and they're getting close to their fundraising goal, but they're not quite there yet. So they have events coming up, I think every Monday night at a restaurant where people can go on some of the proceeds. I'm not going to do a commercial, but we should support them any way that we can to make sure that that wonderful tradition continues. I thought the Memorial Day Parade and ceremonies were phenomenal, and it will be nice to see more things happen. I have a feeling that the question that Mrs. Hanson asked might have to do with paying for buses. I don't think it's paying for, but I don't know that for sure. That's what used to happen in my former community that I lived in. And I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lindy. Counsel Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would certainly agree that the Memorial Day commemoration ceremony was, it was very well-attended and, I thought, extremely well-organized. I certainly want to thank our new veterans agent for the coordination and leadership that he showed in arranging that and in his personal involvement, and he delivered some remarks there. It was, I think, one of the better recent Memorial Day commemorations that we've seen in this town, and I was very happy to see it so well-attended. Certainly yesterday as well, we had a wonderful time at the pride flag raising. It was the, I believe, the fourth annual event that Bridgewater citizens for, sorry, Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights had helped to promote and organize. I thought it was very well-done and very enjoyable, so we'll look forward to seeing the pride flag during the first half of this month, and for the second two weeks of the month, the Juneteenth flag will fly before the Academy Building. And I thank everyone involved for making that happen, and that's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Counsel Strickles?
Thank you so much. I wrote a little something, just to keep myself on track here. I do want to say thank you to those that spoke tonight and continue to speak in anything revolving around town matters. Your presence is always appreciated. A diversity of thought makes our town stronger in so many ways, and I'm always grateful to hear your perspective, so thank you very much. I'm happy that we do live in a diverse and robust town, and I'm very grateful that we have valued DEI in the way that we have. It should be commended, and I personally have done a lot of work in the DEI space, so I truly do commend this town for taking it seriously and making sure that everyone gets a seat at the table, because every voice matters. Finally, the Old Scotland Links paving, it went very, very, very well, so thank you, Town Manager Dutton, for that. They definitely handled it like a well-oiled machine, and no issues on Pine Street whatsoever. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Strickles. Counsel McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say congratulations to the seniors at the Bridgewater Rainham High School on their graduation. I want to encourage these graduates to come to a town council meeting. I'm interested in hearing their perspective on our high school, if there's any improvements we can make, and their thought about the future of Bridgewater. On Saturday, the CERT team assisted at the Senior Center for the International Dance Festival. It was a lot of fun. However, the senior citizens have outgrown their center, which is a compliment to Emily Williams, the director, and her staff. With so many programs, as well as the connections Emily has made with the businesses and organizations in town, seniors are now coming to the center. I'm not sure if I'm overstepping here, but the Senior Center needs a Friends for Seniors organization to help raise funds for the expanding of the current center. And I want to thank you, our veteran agent, for bringing back Bridgewater together to honor and remember our fallen soldiers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McGrath. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sorry, can I add one more little thing?
Coming back to Ms. Robinson. Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, just a quick little shout-out to, I don't, I should have asked, but I don't know the name of the teacher in Bridgewater Middle School, but I wanted to share with all of you that I was at a barbecue this weekend, and a middle schooler said to me, "Oh, we talked about the town council in class the other day," and they talked, you know, they named every single counselor, and we learned about what you all do. So I thought that was wonderful, and I just wanted to share that. So shout-out to Bridgewater Middle School.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. To wrap things up, again, thank you, Ms. McGrath, Counsel McGrath, I was going to bring it up. I wanted to congratulate B R M B P students on their recent graduations. I had the chance to attend the B R graduation, and they graduated about 300 kids on a beautiful day last Friday. So congratulations to all the graduates, and good luck in your futures. Again, I want to commemorate our veterans agent Greg Martin, on putting together a great Memorial Day Parade in a short amount of time, and all the people that came together, CERT team, and all the volunteers that helped out, put that together. It was a great event, and it'll only get better going forward. I also want to congratulate, I didn't get a chance to attend it, but I know the pickleball courts were dedicated to Jim Campbell and the Campbell family for the work that they put in, putting that together. Jim's done a lot of work in town over the years, involved in many projects, so it was a well-deserved dedication, so I want to congratulate Jim for that. And as already mentioned, Juneteenth flag raising will be June 17th here, 3:30 at the, in front of the Academy Building here. And there's also going to be Bridgewater's Juneteenth, Bridgewater State University, that's going to be held on June 22nd with a rain date of June 23rd, starting at about 1:00, I believe. And I'll be speaking at that. Other than that, that's all I have. We do not need executive session, so do I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Counsel Chase, second by Ms. Robinson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.